I'd like to call me in order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, in the midst of all liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, the invocation will be given by Paul Wilson, who's on the council of the Oasis Church in Holly Springs. And I guess you're studying to be something heavy duty, right? I hear something like that. Good luck to you. So, welcome aboard, also Jeremiah in the back. Good to see you Jeremiah again. So, go for it, my friend.
All right. First of all, thank you very much for the support that you've given us because you've been a good friend of our church since the very beginning. We appreciate that. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Let us pray. Almighty God, first, let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so, from your very gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interest and issues of our times. Grant them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. Grant them a hunger for justice and rightness. Grant them the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. Grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around Holly Springs. In your holy name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Paul. Well done. Thank you for bringing your daughter, too. Oh, your face got red. I love it. Never mind. Item number four, adjustment approval of February 19, 2019 meeting agenda, Mayor Portem.
Motion to adopt the February 19, 2019 meeting agenda with the following changes. Defer item 9D to a future meeting.
Second. Motion made second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Item number five is public comment period. We're going to open a public comment period now, and we have one person signed up, and that would be Van Crandall. Van, would you like to come forward, please? And please repeat your name and address as you usually do, please.
Van Crandall, 4813 St. Limeridge Road here in Holly Springs. Good evening. I have timed my remarks for three minutes. Section 5 of the town's UDO addresses planned unit developments and defines various aspects and policies related to PUTs. Section 5.03 defines the review procedures and recommendation by the planning board. Subsection C-2 is titled "Special PUT District Zoning Map Change Procedures," and the first paragraph states the following, quote, "Prior to a PUT district zoning map change and PUT master plan approval request being forwarded to the planning board for review and recommendation, a joint public hearing shall be held between the planning board and the town council, at which time the petitioner shall make the initial presentation of the PUT district zoning map change and PUT master plan approval request. After the conclusion of the joint public hearing before the planning board and town council, the PUT district zoning map change and PUT master plan approval request shall be forwarded to the planning board for review and recommendation consistent with the procedures for other requests for a zoning map change," end quote. North Carolina General Statute 160A-387 is titled "Planning Board Zoning Plan Certification to City Council." The first paragraph states the following, quote, "The plan board shall prepare or show review and comment upon a proposed zoning ordinance, including both the full text of such ordinance and maps showing proposed district boundaries. The planning board may hold public hearings in the course of preparing the ordinance. Upon completion, the planning board shall make a written recommendation regarding adoption of the ordinance to the city council. The city council shall not hold its required public hearing or take action until it has received a recommendation regarding ordinance from the planning board. Following its required public hearing, the city council may refer the ordinance back to the planning board for any further recommendations that the board may wish to make prior to final action by the city council." It seems that the policy in the town's UDO that addresses joint public hearings for PUT district zoning map changes does not reflect the zoning ordinance and map certification process as defined in GS 160A-387, specifically that the city council shall not hold its required public hearing until it has received a recommendation regarding ordinance from the planning board. The town's Development Procedures Manual and Decision Matrix, Section 9.09 of the UDO, also reinforces the town's process policy for having joint meetings that pertain to PUT zoning certifications. Thank you. I have a copy of my written comments, and I also put it on A.
Do you give it to Linda, please?
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll close the public hearing and go to agenda item 6A. This is called recognitions, and I would like to say a few things about this particular person. North Carolina District 17 Senator Sam Cersey grew up near Hendersonville, North Carolina, where his mother worked in public schools and his father worked in local factories. The first of his family to graduate from a four-year college, Appalachian State. There are a few of us here, not me but you, I know. He went on to earn his law degree at the University of Tulsa in Oklahoma. Senator Cersey has created several successful companies in North Carolina, and as a Holly Springs resident, he and his wife have four children. I'd like to have him come to the podium, and you brought your daughter, too.
What's that?
Never mind. And welcome.
Mayor Sears, thank you. Council members, thank you very much for the invitation today to speak. I will be very brief. It is great to be here. It is an honor to serve as your senator in the North Carolina State Senate. Just some of the things we're working on, things have really started to heat up about the past three or four days, as we're getting into the thick of the session. Some of the things that have popped up are issues around public school funding that you're going to see more about over the next couple of days, and also something that popped up today were delays coming from the Department of Transportation regarding roads throughout southern Wake County, throughout Apex and Holly Springs, that have been delayed in terms of funding. So, those are things I'm going to be digging into over the next couple of weeks. I want you to know how accessible we are. You can email and/or call at any time. You're always going to hear back from our office. So, we're here to serve the constituents and the members of folks here in southern Wake County, so never hold back. Most people don't, from the inbox that I've seen lately. So, anyway, thank you again for the invitation, Mayor, and council members, and thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Sam, did you?
Our pleasure. Welcome aboard. Let's give the Senator a hand.
Thank you for the question, Ms. Kelly. I do have a town hall coming up over in Fuquay Varina on March 20. It will be at the Mason Jar Tavern, which is probably one of my favorite restaurants, especially the smores in a jar. We will also be having, I'm sorry?
March 20?
March 20, yes. But we will also be having a town hall here in Holly Springs on April 24. We will publicize that through social media outlets. I will then have one in Apex and then also one in Cary. So, don't feel that you have to drive around and chase us. We'll come to a location near you. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you. Item 7A, request communication. That would be a follow-up of a very successful meeting we had recently, and Melissa Sigmund, talk to us about it.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, lots of great news to share. This is just a project update, so no action requested at this time, but we are pleased to kind of run you through where we've been so far with this year-long project and where we're going next. So, as you remember, we've approved the contract, done some background research. Our community advisory committee was formed and has met twice now. Our internal staff technical committee has been meeting regularly and has met with the consultants to make sure that everyone knows what's going on and to prepare for our next phases of the project. We've begun the community outreach, and the Community Ideas Exchange Workshop was held last week, so those are the two items that we'll really discuss this evening. So, starting with that, our community outreach, really, we had, we've gone all across the board. I would like to mention that this was really a multi-department effort. So, we had folks from, you know, all across the board, whether it was IT helping us out, communications, spreading the word, our various development departments. We had engineering, parks and recreation. So, this really covered many departments throughout the town. So, whether it was Facebook, Twitter, our notify me e-blasts and text messages, getting the word out on the town's website, sending emails to folks we have on lists who either have been involved in previous projects, such as the Southern Area Planning Initiative, other development-related emails that people have given us their contact information for so we could spread the news. The folks who received Town Water received the Source Newsletter in their water bill advertising the community workshop. We also posted yard signs throughout town to make sure folks, especially in the ETJ or who may not reach some of those other communication methods, were aware of the event. And of course, the word of mouth and the multiplier effect, so all the folks that we contacted, whether it was people we sent emails to, our community advisory committee, our boards and commissions that are engaged in the town, they shared the news as well and really helped us make sure that we could get the word out to as many groups of people as possible. So, that was all very appreciated and really showed in the event itself. In addition, we have some more traditional forms of communication, both having posters and handouts, flyers that we provided, over a thousand of those distributed, both through the town. Any event we could get to, whether it was the farmer's market, we, you know, we were giving those out at local businesses so they could give them to their customers, or their customers could pick them up when they were shopping in right around Main Street. We also sent out over 1,100 postcards to our ETJ residents. We know folks in the ETJ, they may not be, they're not getting our water, they're not getting our water bill, they may not be signed up for town emails. So, we wanted to make a concerted effort to make sure that those folks in particular received communication. So, again, we really tried to blanket folks in as many different ways to get the word out, and as a result, we were very happy that we had over 150 attendees sign in. So, of course, there were other folks who may have come in. They, you know, we had such a crowd that they may not have stopped at the sign-in station. Folks brought their children, and maybe they didn't sign in, so we had more than 150 people there last Wednesday night.
You had more.
Yeah. So, it was great to see so many people not only attend the workshop but be highly engaged. They were providing us comments. They were really interested in the different activities and exercises and, you know, wanted to tell us more about the reasons for the choices they were making or the answers they were giving, so that we could understand what was behind their rationale. So, that was really very great to see, especially, we know, you know, folks have a lot on their plate, long days, and they came out in the evening and gave us their feedback about what they want to see for the community. We, our GIS staff, were able to put together a map based on the sign-ins to provide the locations where folks registered their address as. So, you can see that our participants really did come from all across town, well distributed. So, you can see, we really were able to get the word out very well, we think, and as a result, you know, make sure we can get a wide range of opinions and folks who have different experiences and understandings of how the town may look and feel today and So, going forward, we have to take all that information we received at the workshop and both enter it so that we have it electronically, as well as get it ready for analysis. So, that's what we've been working on for this past week, both staff as well as the consultant team. If you go out to our website, the revisionhsnc.com, you'll also see that information is starting to get populated on the website in terms of responses. They've uploaded some videos showing the event. We'll get some photos up there as well, and there's also a number of tools that equate to the activities folks participated in. Obviously, we can't have Legos online, however, we have the equivalent so that folks can still provide their feedback if they weren't able to come out, or if there's something maybe that, you know, they didn't think of at the time, they can go out there, they can sign up, and then they can provide feedback to cover all of those same topic areas, and that will be available. It's up there, starting now already, and our consultants are continuing to add to it, so they'll be able to start to see some of those results as all the information is entered in. And really, this was that first stage of public engagement. So, that was our kind of opening, you know, getting on the mark. With that, we're taking this and running with it into our next event. And so, that's going to be Planapalooza. So, this is our five-day design charrette. This is, it's February 28 through March 4, so it's coming up really soon. That is a Thursday through Monday, so some folks look at those dates and they're wondering if they were off. Nope, that is over a weekend purposely so that everyone can try to come out. There's a time that would work for them. We will have both open sessions where someone can come out, see what the consultants are doing, what they are actually drawing, some of the illustrations that will be included in the final plan document. There are also going to be deep dive discussions. So, these are those targeted meetings, if you will, where someone can have further discussion on the topics that we already touched on at the workshop, but getting into more detail. So, it's a sit-down, time to talk in more depth, and you can go to all the meetings, you can go to the one that most suits your interests or the things that you'd like to focus on, and we hope this will give folks that opportunity to have a more thorough discussion of some of these really interesting things that came up at the workshop. We saw folks wrestling with the idea of where should land uses occur? How should they occur? And understanding that it was challenging and that there's not necessarily simple answers, and that's okay, and that's why we're having these conversations, to make sure that we can really understand what everyone values and what they want to see. So, after that five-day span with all of those opportunities for the different types of participation, we'll have a wrap-up that really sums up everything that occurred for those five days, and that's going to be on Monday, March 4, at 6:00 PM, right here in the council chambers, so that if someone didn't, wasn't able to attend, or if they just want to understand, okay, just give me the, you know, the Cliff Notes version, they can attend that meeting and understand what the larger community's thoughts were. And with that, I'd also have the website up there once more, because this is a great way to know what times all of the deep dives are going to be occurring at, get more information about the specifics. There'll be brief descriptions about each of the topic areas so that folks can really make sure it's what they are interested in and what they want to attend. With that, I'd take any questions you might have.
Questions or comments? Melissa.
Real quick, thank you so much. I've heard great things about it. Is there any kind of electronic flyer you can send us for Planapalooza?
Yes, certainly. We will send that out as well. We had an initial flyer for the workshop and Planapalooza. We can resend that out so that you can get that out again, and we'll continue to inform people and keep it fresh on their mind, so.
I have a question for John Chafano, is that if we're going to be all together on the 4th, is there anything that we have to announce or anything, if we all end up being here for that? Because I know during the other event, we weren't all together, but we may be on the 4th.
So, yeah, we probably could advertise that as a special meeting. Probably go through that advertisement.
That's a good idea. Yep.
Thank you. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thanks.
You've done good.
Great.
Thanks.
So, there are others?
Thanks, Melissa. Okay. Item 8A, public hearing, special exception use petition 18SEU-15300 South Main Street to allow for artisan food and beverage produce. Matt Beard.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening, Matt.
All right. So, as you just stated, we are looking at a request for a special exception use. We are asking you to conduct a quasi-judicial public hearing for the special exception use, make a determination on the findings of fact, and consider the special exception use. And I apologize, those, the project numbers in those last two points should be 18SEU-15. Yes, so 18SEU-15 is the request for a special exception use for a artisan food and beverage producer in the TV Town Village District, property at 300 South Main Street. So, this is the property in question, spans from Main Street to Avant Ferry. The current construction work is being done on the Town Hall Commons Project just north of this. Rogers Street would connect through from Main Street to Avant Ferry, and the actual lease space that they are talking about inhabiting is on the corner of Avant Ferry and the Rogers Street Extension. So, this is a proposed floor plan taken from the approved development plans for the block, showing where that lease space would be located. The planning board did not have any issues or concerns with the proposal. If you have any questions, we do have the representative.
Anything for Van? Good?
I have one question.
Real close.
Sorry. I'm fighting a cold. Is there any consideration for smoking areas? Because I know that some of the other restaurant, artisan places, people tend to smoke right outside the main doors, and it's, and I think it's something that we should consider about making it pedestrian-friendly and smoke-free for folks who don't want to be around the smoke.
I'm not sure what the, if there are state requirements regarding that.
Right. We were able to prohibit smoking in anything with three walls and a roof, and we're just not able to prohibit smoking in an open area.
Can we encourage places to have smoking areas away from the front doors?
That's a good idea. Yeah. Certainly, I think we can. We couldn't say, you're not allowed to, you know, smoke on the.
Right.
We can't prohibit smoking on the sidewalk or in an open area, but certainly, I think that's a valid exercise of our planning and probably need to maybe think about that in the UDO as far as the site plan requirement, and maybe tailor it to a certain-sized building. If you're above a certain-sized building, you have to provide a area, a certain distance away for smoking.
Right. I'd like us to consider that.
Absolutely. Yeah. And the applicant might be able to talk about, you know, what they had planned, if anything, in regards to smoking locations.
Anything else, Matt, at this point?
I have nothing else.
Any further questions to Matt on this? Okay. At this time, we're going to open a public hearing. We do have one person, and it's Chris from Marsh Landing, which is one of my neighbors. But, Chris, I can't pronounce your last name, so where are you?
It's Melkey, sir.
There you are. I didn't hear you.
Oh, Melkey. Do you want me to speak?
Yeah, do you want to speak? Yeah. You signed up, so you got to speak.
Okay.
And again, your name and address.
Sure.
And then whatever you have to say.
Okay. My name is Chris Melkey. I live at 428 Marsh Landing Drive here in Holly Springs. We've been here in Holly Springs for over 12 years now, and we're happy to give back to the community and with the block project, it gives us an opportunity to do something special for the town. The project, unfortunately, I can't give any details because we're waiting on PR and that sort of thing, but it's an award-winning artisan food and beverage producer, so it'll be an excellent addition to the town, and I think it'll be definitely a draw to the downtown and to the block project. So, we're very excited. We're, unfortunately, like I said, we're trying to organize certain things and making sure that this goes through before we commit to anything, so we want to keep it a little bit quiet, but then we'll ramp up the fanfare going forward.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
This time, we'll close the public hearing. Further discussion from the board, if there is any.
I'm good.
Looking good?
Good.
All right. Let's, go ahead, Matt. Two motions? Somebody want to tackle the first one?
Motion to make and accept the findings of fact for a special exception use specified in UDO to allow for an artisan food and beverage producer use in the TV Town Village District at the property located at 300 South Main Street, Wake County, PIN number 0649903903.
Second. Motion made second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed unanimously. Number two.
Having made findings of fact that the project meets the requirements to be granted a special exception use, motion to approve special exception use number 18SEU-15 as specified in Unified Development Ordinance, Section 3.03A2C, TV Town Village District, to allow for an artisan food and beverage producer use in the TV Town Village District at the property located at 300 South Main Street, Wake County, PIN 0649903903, as submitted by Joni Barnes, with the conditions listed on the screen.
Second.
Motion made second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Again, motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Item 8B, excuse me, public hearing, A1901 Stephens Trax Annexation. Melissa Sigmund.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome back.
Thanks. So, this is a request for annexation. The requested action tonight is to open and close the public hearing and then to adopt Annexation Ordinance A1901-01. As shown here, the property does consist of multiple parcels with multiple property owners. This is a voluntary annexation petition, voluntary request. It is contiguous to the town limits and is approximately 56.75 acres in size, spanning both north and south of Ralph Stevens Road, in between Avant Ferry and Main Street, as you can see on the map. This request does meet all statutory requirements for annexation. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions. This is related to the two cases that follow the development plan, I believe, and yes.
Yes. Okay. Any questions or comments of Melissa at this point? Seeing that? We'll open the public hearing, but we'll also close it because no one signed up. Further discussion from the board. All good? All good. Motion.
Motion to adopt Annexation Ordinance A19-01, annexing 56.752 plus-minus acres owned by Agnes H. Smith, revocable living trust David L. and Brenda Gail Tollison, Stevens Cousins LLC, William and Kathleen Kessler Ling, and CSX Transportation Incorporated into the corporate limits of the town of Holly Springs.
Second.
Motion made second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes again unanimously. Thank you, and thank you, Melissa. Item 8C, public hearing, 18REZ09CSX Rail. Matt Beard's back.
All right. Second piece of this puzzle. So, this is the rezoning for a sliver of old CSX Railroad right-of-way. We are asking you to hold a legislative public hearing to receive comments on the proposed zoning map and to consider the rezoning request. So, this is the location of the property. For context, this is kind of the outline of the annexation that you just voted on, so this is a portion of that. Context of zoning, it is bordered on two sides by RMF-15. This is the Stevens Cousins LLC property that was just annexed. Additionally, we have the community business to the north, the shopping center, and some R-20 residential. The planning board did recommend approval. If you'd like any clarification on discussion items, we do have the planning board representative
Anything for Van Crandall? Once again, we're good. Thank you, Van. At this point in time, we'll open a public hearing and again, close it because no one signed up. Next. Next.
And if there is anything from the applicant, okay.
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jason Barron, with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant. Here to answer any questions you all might have, as you all are aware, you just annexed a site that included a, a portion of it that doesn't have zoning. This was a part of a development project that you all see, will see shortly, that you've approved a rezoning for the vast majority of the property, subject to it. This is a piece that during the, the process of due diligence associated with the site, we, we learned, our, our sellers thought they owned the property, and we learned that C S X had conflicting information, and that it was in fact theirs, and so we had to work through the process of negotiating with C S X, a very unmotivated seller. And so, we were fortunate to be able to get that under contract, be able to get this annexation submitted, and we've requested a rezoning consistent with all of the property around it. So that's why it's here.
Questions of the applicant?
No.
Pretty clear.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any further discussion?
I have one question for Matt on, if you look at that, if you look at that parcel, I think the case stops kind of right with where the Stevens property tract stops, and there's another sliver that continues on. Is that, yeah, same thing? Is that C S X property?
We had asked for that to be included in the rezoning petition. C S X was not motivated to include that in the annexation or rezoning petitions, as they receive a lower tax rate if they do not join our jurisdiction.
Okay. So they still own that piece, they just don't want to annex or get a zone, because there's no zoning on it now, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions or comments of Matt? Doesn't surprise me totally. Okay, for his other questions, we have two motions.
And, and consistency is taken.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The requested zone map change from unzoned property to R M F fifteen, multifamily residential use is consistent with the objectives of the Vision Holly Springs Comprehensive Plan, which supports a range of housing types, including townhouses, condominiums, and apartments. And the R M F fifteen district allows for multifamily residential development. The annexation and zoning of this property will allow for the orderly development of the surrounding properties without the creation of gaps in the town's network of services and infrastructure, and will support the development of residential uses in proximity to existing commercial centers. Motion to accept the statements of compatibility listed in agenda packets as true.
Second. Motion made, second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed unanimously number two.
Motion to adopt ordinance eighteen dash R E Z zero nine to approve an intact zone map change petition number eighteen dash R E Z dash zero nine, to assign the zoning of one point three acres of property with attached legal description from unzoned property to R dash M F dash one five, multifamily residential use, as submitted by Neil Gosh.
Second. Motion made, second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Matt. Stick around. Agenda item eight D, public hearing, development plan eighteen D P thirteen for two hundred ninety-two units of multifamily townhomes for the Stevens Track. Matt Beard, again.
You got it.
And maybe Rachel Jones, maybe.
So you just read essentially the purpose. The requested action would be to hold evidentiary public hearing on the proposed multifamily development plan, and to consider and make a determination on the development plan. So this is essentially the assemblage of the properties that were just annexed, including the little sliver of C S X property. The zoning, right now, since this was just approved, is R M F fifteen and R M F eight conditional use. The conditional use rezoning was completed several months ago, and we can look through the conditions if we want. I guess I hid them. So there were a list of eleven conditions that set density limits on the individual parcels, as well as on the overall combination of those three parcels. It did not impact any of the properties zoned R M F fifteen, since it was tied to zoning. Additionally, there were conditions regarding some road improvements to connect out to the South Main Street with, I believe, just a pedestrian connection, as well as to Avant Ferry with a pedestrian and vehicular connection. The site plan was provided on the screen. To the north side, we see the majority of the proposed townhomes, as well as a large amenity center near the northern end, a greenway connection being made from the northwest, or northeast portion of the site, all the way across the northern edge behind the shopping center, and then down following along a creek to Ralph Stevens Road, where it would then connect out to Avant Ferry ahead of a connection across Avant Ferry, connecting with existing and other proposed or under construction greenway. Additionally, connections are made to the shopping center, stub two, undeveloped property over here, and to the Autumn Park subdivision. We can have Rachel come up and talk about engineering items, if you would like. If you have questions.
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I have a few questions on the sewer line, so.
Please come.
You can hear that.
I do as well. Rachel Jones.
Good evening. How are you all today?
You got a question?
Good. We can start with your question, if you'd like to.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
The planned conditions, I saw a number of conditions that were kind of like if-then statements, so if upstream development doesn't build the pump station at Basil Creek, then this development would be required to do that. Can you just explain what those improvements are, and then are they going to happen timely enough for this development?
So there are improvements and upgrades phased with the Holly Springs Basil Creek pump station. There was a pump station and sewer basin study report done a couple years ago, so there's three phases. The Lowe's development plan has triggered those improvements, or the master plan, rather. So under that development plan, a sewer study was submitted, and they are pursuing those improvements and upgrades, all of phase two and part of phase three, which includes replacing the pumps existing today with larger pumps, extending gravity sewer and taking the Garrison Pump Station offline, and then installing force main as part of that as well. So that will accommodate this development plan, the Stevens Track project. However, if that is not in place prior to the Stevens Track development plan, you know, ready to start construction, then they would be responsible for those improvements. So timing is of the essence, but the infrastructure would have to be there for them to connect to, so.
Okay.
And, and just to give you kind of the reverse scenario of that, this project would trigger those upgrades, so that's why we're kind of in that state of, of flux.
Thanks.
And just a touch on the, the water service with the development plan, a water main extension from Avant Ferry Road down Ralph Stevens, all the way to Main Street will be installed. And we touched on the gravity sewer. They show on the, the plans where they plan to connect to today, and then any upgrades beyond that obviously would be dependent on the previous discussion that we had. As far as transportation, the traffic impact analysis was completed and approved with the rezoning. All of the improvements that were identified in the T I A have been incorporated with this development plan. So Ralph Stevens Road will be widened, I'm going to go back up to the site plan here, across the, the property frontage on both sides of Ralph Stevens. So from Main Street, they're coming all the way up now with the rezoning to Avant Ferry Road. On the southern side of Ralph Stevens, they will start here at the property line and widen across the frontage, and it is a four-lane median divided ultimate cross-section. And with those improvements, Matt touched on some of the pedestrian improvements, so sidewalk will be provided from the intersection with Main Street, all the way up across this northern property line. Ten-foot sidewalk to tie into the greenway that Matt kind of highlighted here, and that ten-foot sidewalk will be extended to the intersection with Avant Ferry Road. And as I think most of you are aware, we have phase one Avant Ferry Road improvements that are, you know, in final design. We're, we're ready to get those started. An eight-foot sidewalk will be installed as part of that project, so we'll have a nice pedestrian connection all the way to that intersection. On the opposite side of Ralph Stevens, a standard five-foot sidewalk was required, and that's what will be included with those improvements. All right. So part of what Matt touched on, additional improvements that came along with the rezoning that were not identified in the T I A, is an additional right-turn lane extended from the property line to the intersection with Avant Ferry Road, and one of the conditions of the rezoning was to coordinate with the Avant Ferry Road, phase one road improvements. The project will not be able to receive a C O until those improvements are completed. All right. Are there any other questions about engineering, transportation, or utilities?
Yes, no? 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 No, we're good.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
So I tried to prepare a summary that is in alignment with some of the points that are in your packet for this project, so I'll address them in that manner. So the Planning Board discussed the following issues or concerns that they're meeting on one twenty-two, twenty nineteen. Questions about the traffic impact analysis and the assumptions being used in preparing them. Some Planning Board members requested more detailed clarification about the traffic impact analysis. And some additional information was provided. Staff stated that there has been an extensive review of the area as it pertains to all proposed development, including a conservative six percent growth rate. Next item, location of primary access points versus north connection behind here is teeter. Some clarification was requested about the primary access points for the proposed project. Staff provided some additional information about traffic flow pertaining to primary access from northbound and southbound on Ralph Stevens Road. Discussion by some Planning Board members concluded that commuter traffic to and from the proposed project would primarily occur to points north and not so much to the south. For example, morning traffic would head north on Ralph Stevens Road, and then turn right on Avant Ferry Road to the fifty-five bypass, then turn left. The assumption is most morning commuters will not be traveling south. Next item, concern about crosswalk safety at Ralph Stevens Road crossing. Of the two hundred ninety-two units proposed with this project, around seventy units, or thirty-one percent, are located on the west side of Ralph Stevens Road, and the remaining two hundred and twenty-two units are on the east side of the road. The proposed amenity center and plate lawn are located at the farthest east side of the proposed project. A project participant at the meeting clarified that the target market for this development is working families and empty nesters. Traffic congestion on Ralph Stevens Road will steadily increase over time, including where this proposed project straddles both sides of the road. The four-way intersection at Ralph Stevens Road in northernmost entrance of the project would provide vehicle access to both the east side and west side segments. With Ralph Stevens intended to be a four-lane road, combined with turning lanes at this intersection, absent of a signal and/or a highly visible crosswalk or other countermeasures, pedestrians and bicyclists, particularly youngsters, going from the west side of the project to the project's amenity center on the east side, could find it challenging to cross Ralph Stevens Road safely. The interconnection to the South Park Shopping Center near the amenity center could provide vehicles and pedestrians with access through the project's amenity parking lot, and then using interior streets. The interconnection at the far west end of the project to Autumn Park and Klein Falls Drive could evolve into a preferred route to South Park Shopping Center by meandering through both sides of the project and crossing at that same four-way intersection. Next item, discussion of greenway connections and gaps in pedestrian connectivity. Some discussion about countermeasures to slow down excess speed occurred, as well as proposed sidewalk installations and some expected gaps in pedestrian access. However, I do not recall a list that defines those specific gaps, or seeing them identified on the ma, on a map, except tonight there was a bit more clarification. Level of buffering and visibility of back of townhomes from Ralph Stevens Road was also discussed. So if you drive north on Holly Springs Road into Cary, just past the Tryon Road intersection, where Holly Springs Road turns into Walnut, there is a large townhouse project on the left side of the road. The structures are relatively close to the road, and the development's buffering was not very effective. Using that development as an example, a question was asked if the buffering between the townhomes and Ralph Stevens Road could result in a similar negative appearance outcome. Next item, requested design of street lighting plans for review by Planning Board and Town Council, rather than as part of construction drawing review process. So the proposal contains multiple drawing plans, however, the plan, plans for onsite and any applicable off-site lighting were not provided. In the council's suggested motion before you tonight, item eight A addresses onsite lighting and states, quote, "A point-by-point photometric plan for all site lighting, not including public right-of-way, street, and pedestrian lights, in conformance with lighting levels specified in U D O Section seven point oh two shall be submitted to and approved by the Department of Planning and Zoning," end quote. The Planning Board's version of this item stated that the photometric plan for site lighting must be submitted with the first review of construction drawings. The council's version has that stipulation removed. A question was asked by a Planning Board member if public street lighting is a part of the town's required road improvements. As stated previously, the council's suggested motion version clarifies that the plan will not include public right-of-way, street, and pedestrian lights. However, U D O Section seven point oh seven, titled Street Design and Right-of-Way Reservation, states in paragraph thirteen and sub-paragraph seventeen, titled Street Lighting, it states, "Street lighting shall be provided along all interior and perimeter streets as the developers' or subdividers, at the developers' or subdividers' expense, in accordance with the most recent street lighting policy adopted by the town of Holly Springs." So how does the proposed project not straddle both sides of Ralph Stevens Road as a perimeter So I guess, you know, what is the town's most recent street lighting policy adopted by the town of Holly Springs, as referenced by sub-paragraph seventeen? Does the policy exist? And is it necessary for the town to address its street lighting policy before considering a decision on this and other future projects? Let's see, there was another comment, no more than eighty-five percent of building permits, two hundred and forty-eight units, shall be issued. "No more than 85% of building permits, 248 units, shall be issued prior to the completion of all developed recreational open space." I just had that in there. It's part of the motion, I think. That's the summary report from the planning board.
Any questions, Evan, at this point? Good. Thank you, Evan.
Thanks, Evan.
Disconfirming 711, and the second motion was 801. Anything else, man? All set? Discussion from the board.
We need the public hearing first.
Is there a public hearing?
Oh, yes.
And are you speaking?
Sorry. We'll open a public hearing and close a public hearing. No one spoke or signed up for the public hearing. Did I miss that? Now, for discussion?
Is the developer going to speak or present?
Is the developer here, man? Sure. Welcome back.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Jason Barron here on behalf of the applicant. Here with me tonight is Mr. Nick Antrilli with Withers RAVNL. As you all are aware, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, and so Mr. Antrilli, in addition to presenting the plan and being available to answer any questions you all will have or may have, Mr. Antrilli will be addressing the evidentiary findings that have to be made as part of this process. I'm going to turn it over to him in just a moment and appreciate Mr. Crandall's thorough report from the planning board discussion that occurred on this meeting. You all's planning board does an exhaustive job in reviewing applications that come before them, and we appreciated greatly the thorough conversation they had associated with this request and were reassured, given the thorough discussion that occurred that Mr. Crandall provided with the seven-to-one recommendation of approval. We think they did a great job of vetting the application. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Antrilli to walk through the details of the plan, and then we'll conclude with some closing remarks. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Nick Antrilli. I'm with Withers RAVNL. We are located at 115 McKinnon Drive in Cary, North Carolina. I have been a registered professional engineer in the state of North Carolina since 2011 and have practiced engineering here in the town of Holly Springs since 2007. I have oversaw the preparation of the plans that are before the council tonight. There are a couple items I wanted to discuss prior to getting to some closing remarks. One being density. Based on the current zoning of the assemblage, especially the rezoning of the CSX piece tonight, there are a maximum potential for 459 units that may be constructed. The plan before you, as previously mentioned, proposes 292 units, which equates to roughly a 5.2 units per acre. With regards to parking, the site plan, including the future amenity, provides 31 spaces above the minimum town requirement. Open space, we are required with this development to provide 3.3 acres of developed open space. The plans before you show 4.5 acres. 2.8 acres alone is located in the future amenity area, as mentioned, furthest east of the property. The plan provides roughly a one-mile greenway trail loop that surrounds the site. You got the exhibit. Here we go.
There we go.
Very nice. So we are providing, it's not shown here on the rendering, but we're providing a 10-foot greenway connection out towards Avant Ferry. We are doing a 10-foot multi-use path along the north side of the widening, west side of the project, the entire length. In addition to that 10-foot multi-use path, we are providing a 5-foot pedestrian sidewalk to connect to Main Street. And the one-mile loop that I had mentioned starts somewhere in here and basically runs the whole perimeter of the project. And then we've got a piece that comes down here along the stormwater control measures. With regards to the tree preservation, the project is required to have 10%. This project provides 12%. But it must be noted that the site is, in its entirety, actually provides 25%, 14 and a half acres that will remain natural based on the existing stream buffers and wetlands. The site has a stream in the lower portion, which actually has a 100-foot buffer, 200-foot cumulative, and it also is divided on the south with a stream, 100-foot buffer, 200-foot cumulative, as well as substantial amount of wetlands. With regards to connectivity and transportation, the site provides two road connections, which are actually identified on the town's comprehensive transportation plan. One being the connection to Autumn Park, out to Ralph Stevens, and again, on the town's comprehensive transportation plan, a connection through this property tying to the Harris Teeter parking lot. We're also providing pedestrian connection to South Park Village via the greenway on the north end. And the site, as a whole, provides roughly a half a mile of road widening with additional turn lanes and sidewalk. So all that being said, in conclusion, it's my professional opinion that the proposed use will not be injurious to the public health, safety, comfort, community morale standards, convenience, or general welfare, will not injure or adversely affect the adjacent area, is consistent with the character of the district, the land uses, and the town of Holly Springs' comprehensive plan, and conforms to all development standards of the district, including the architectural standards. Access drives or driveways are sufficient in size and properly located to ensure automotive and pedestrian safety and convenience, traffic flow, asset fourth in Section 7.07 pedestrian circulation, and vehicular area design and control, and access in case of fire or other emergency. The off-street parking areas, off-street loading areas, trash enclosures, and other service areas are located such as to be safe, convenient, allow for access in case of emergency, and minimize negative impacts on adjoining properties and properties in the general neighborhood. Utilities, fire, police, and other necessary public and private facilities and services will be adequate to handle the needs of the proposed use. The location and arrangement of the use on the site, screening, buffering, landscaping, and pedestrian ways harmonize with adjacent properties and the general area and minimize adverse impacts. And lastly, the type, size, and intensity of the proposed use will not have a significant adverse impact on adjoining properties of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Nick. And with that, Mr. Mayor, we would ask that the council receive into evidence copies of the staff report, as well as the exhibits that are attached to that, and take judicial notice of the contents of the town's unified development ordinance and other adopted plans. Ultimately, I hope you all, we appreciate the opportunity to be here. We're excited to be here, particularly tonight. It has been a long road. It's been a complicated process to bring this project together in the first instance. And CSX, no pun intended, was a small snag along the way, but a meaningful one. And there were a lot of hiccups along the way, but ultimately, we hope that this is a project that you all are proud of. You know, as we talked about during the zoning process for this, you know, our development team listened intently to the conversations associated with the updates to the land use plan that you all recently made for this area and designed our plans around that. During the zoning process, we believe we were receptive to the comments that we received from you all, and we believe that development plan before you tonight not only satisfies the evidentiary requirements, but it's a good plan. It's the right plan. It contains great pedestrian connectivity. It's responsible with respect to traffic impacts that are associated with any development project. It has gone above and beyond what the traffic impact analysis recommends for this case by adding things like the turn lane onto Avant Ferry Road, which will help with any potential bottlenecking. It contains a very sizable open space area designed for the community. And so we believe that this checks all of the boxes, provides the type of pedestrian and vehicular connectivity to adjacent non-residential services that I think folks in the, you know, moving to this community and moving into this particular community will be looking for. And so we hope you'll agree with us that this is the right plan and the right location, and respectfully request you all's support for the case. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicants? We're here. Go ahead.
Where are the mailboxes?
Sure. There is one central mail kiosk located in the amenity area. I believe it's under my cursor, although potentially not shown on the rendering.
So there's nothing on the other side of...
My concerns is... I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Let me revise that. We have one central kiosk located on the north that is at the amenity. We do have, I believe it's three smaller kiosks, potentially two. I can check my plans, but there's one here with parking provided, and there's also one over here with parking provided. This kiosk, again, intended to serve the southern portion of the southern property, and the other kiosk intended to serve these folks as well.
Okay, so folks won't have to cross to get their mail?
They will not have to cross to get their mail. The folks on the northern section will go to the kiosk at the amenity. The folks on the south have two separate kiosks for them. They do not have to cross Ralph Stevens Road.
Okay. And what park facilities are you providing on the west side so that... I'm concerned about having families to cross Ralph Stevens.
Sure. The one piece of developed open space we're providing is a bosque, which is basically a strategic formation of tree canopy, which is basically mimicking the existing nature of the southern half of the property. There are no playgrounds currently proposed on the south side predominantly. Most of the open space, developed spaces, is on the north side.
And Councilwoman Kelly, we received that same question when we were at the planning board with respect to the location of open spaces. And this was a design, as I understand it, and as Mr. Antrilli provided to the planning board, a design that the landscape architects liked a lot. It was in keeping with the heavily treed nature of the southern portion of that site. But with respect to that bosque area, if it's the will of this council to have that revised to provide for an open space with benches or something along those lines, I think that's something that my client would be amenable to. Again, it was something that the architects really liked from making it a more natural experience, but certainly we have the flexibility to provide for an open space area if that's the will of the council.
And when I look at the subdivision, I see it how you want to build it. When I try to think about how I live there, I do struggle with how do I live here if I have young kids and where do they go play and having to cross into the other, like way on the other side. I'm struggling with thinking how that experience of living in this neighborhood actually feels like a neighborhood that you really want to be part of.
Right. Well, hopefully homeowners will, hopefully they'll take a good look at that and keep that in mind when choosing which side. But what, I mean, can we put a significant crosswalk there with or can, with the crosswalk signals like that are out there that we have now right in front of here at Town Hall that are very significant? They light up, they're bright. I think that would warrant that right in that area, but I'm not sure.
And Nick, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the plan, as shown, is for a high-visibility crossing to occur here with signage. I don't know if the plan right now is to provide for illuminated signage, but that's certainly something that we are happy to talk about with the staff, and I appreciate the concern associated with pedestrian safety, especially given the fact that this is one, you know, fully integrated and designed community.
I mean, I'm one of those people that's like, you know, it's personal responsibility. You've got to know what you're getting when you buy your house, but that is going to be very, a highly traveled road, and anything we can do to make that safe.
That's a great point.
Especially if you're going to have great amenities.
Yeah, it's not just for the residents of that neighborhood. It's for all of Holly Springs, being so integrated and near amenities. You'll have runners and cyclists going through the neighborhood. You'll have cars coming off of Avant Ferry onto Ralph Stevens, and just as they're starting to accelerate, and they'll hit that crosswalk. So it should incorporate state-of-the-art technology to make it as visible and advanced.
Right.
Councilwoman Lee and Councilman Bilson, that's something that during the construction drawing process that would be looked at in greater detail. At this point, we're kind of higher level, so we get the crosswalk in and have that identified, and then the construction drawing review process on the engineering side will look at that in greater detail. So we'll take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Do you happen to know what the speed limit is on Ralph Stevens there?
35, I can.
Will it remain that way?
It just turns to 35.
It used to be 55.
Yeah, I agree. They spoke for me, so I'm not going to beat it up, but I do support a more visible crosswalk there using some of those, the ones we have right outside of Town Hall, and you press the button, they flash, and I think it would help illuminate it. It's going to be a pretty busy connection point, and as you saw through the rezoning phase, through planning board vehicular and pedestrian connectivity are probably some of our biggest concerns, and some consideration for an illuminated device like that would go a long way.
I would strongly agree with that. We talk about crosswalk safety every meeting. The ones with the lights, as long as people know to press a button, they work very well. At least, I think so. Rachel, you got anything else to add on that? Okay. All right.
Could you share a little bit more the buffering and screening that will occur behind the townhomes that are on Ralph Stevens?
The townhomes along Ralph Stevens, they have a required 30-foot street yard buffer. And I believe it is a B... It's a B75 perimeter yard, in addition to the rear yard that we're providing. So the homes are roughly 50-plus feet away from the right-of-way.
I'm considering the situation where we have, you know, we have that nice 10-foot sidewalk that goes all along Ralph Stevens Road, but right next to it, you will have some sparse trees and then rows of fences and different kinds of fences and just a very, for lack of a better term, unpleasant look or disparate look along that route, and also privacy for the townhomes.
One of the things I'm having a hard time with is almost the leap of faith of the detail is not there and what is the experience of the buffers and what's it going to look like? And it feels like we don't really have that level of detail, and I am concerned about what is it going to be like to live there? What is it going to be like to drive by there? How does this really fit into how we want Holly Springs to be as a community? And I'm not feeling that right now because it just...
Okay.
It feels like it'll be hard to get to the amenity, you know?
One of the items that the developers committed to doing as part of the rezoning, I believe, is providing window surrounds as an architectural consideration for all the units that face Ralph Stevens Road. But as far as the buffer, we're open to suggestions, but as of right now, we're meeting the intent of the code. We do not have a rendering that shows the buffer.
Want to help, Matt?
Yeah. I mean, we do have the typical section provided as part of the landscape plan. It doesn't give you really a three-dimensional view of it, but it can give you an idea of what the types of trees that are included with it. And you, of course, when a buffer goes in, it's going to be smaller than it is 15 years after it goes in theoretically, unless everything's dead and doesn't get replaced. So, I mean, you have to kind of use your imagination a little bit, unfortunately.
I think in some developments, when we see them, they tell us we're going to have this type of exact tree, this type, this type, and I think that's...
Well, they just sell it more, like what it'll feel like to live there and how great it will be and what prices the homes will be, and, you know, like, we don't really have very much information. But so what is the price range for these homes?
Yeah.
Can't ask those questions now?
Can't get to that at this quasi-judicial stage.
Okay.
I mean, if there's additional information, again, you know, this is a special exception development plan approval, and our obligation is to demonstrate that we satisfy our evidentiary burden. You know, if you've got additional questions about the plan itself, we're certainly happy to answer those. I mean, with respect to the buffer that's being provided along Ralph Stevens Road, that's the streetscape that is required by the ordinance. And so our plans incorporate the ordinance requirement with respect to landscaping along that street. And again, that's kind of our burden to show the manner in which we're satisfying the ordinance requirements for an approval of this nature. And as Mr. Antrilli noted, we've got some architectural treatments that are incorporated into the development plan and the zoning. incorporated into the, into the development plan and the zoning that touch on some of those things as well.
Any other questions, sir? Anything else on the buffering we should talk about, Matt?
No, I mean, we can, we can walk through the species and specimen size and spacing and things if you'd like. Happy to share that information.
You mean the, those are just the options though, that they have to choose?
No, there, there's a specific, yeah, there's a specific planting plan that they will have to comply with if they are to get any of the certificates of occupancy for the nearest townhome units.
Maybe if you could just remind us what B-75 is typically used for?
Okay. So it would, of course, be used for the townhome or multifamily developments along thoroughfares. Trying to think of where we've had any installed recently. Can't think of any right now, but the, I mean, it's
It's a fairly common one.
Yeah, so it's a mix of evergreen and deciduous. So it's meant to provide both the larger canopy tree coverage as well as the year-round evergreen buffering so that we're getting both the lower-level screening and the upper-level canopy benefits.
Any other questions, the applicants?
So tell me again what you're gonna do. Are you gonna add possibly playgrounds or something like that on the west side? Is that under consideration?
Yeah, again, we are perfectly willing to remove the, the landscaping that showed in this area and replace it with a, an open green with benches or something along those lines to provide for an area for residents to congregate. If that's the will of the, the council, we're happy to do that.
Kristi, I think you're talking more of like an amenity, like playground, not just a bench.
Like a real, yeah, like a real, yeah, that's, that's like tucked in, like.
I think my concern though, I mean, if we had a amenity on the south, southwestern portion, would there be more cross traffic as people go to eat? You know, I assume it would not be a carbon copy of amenities, amenities on either side. So it may draw folks on, on either side to the other amenity as opposed to reducing that, that foot traffic.
Yeah, and I think we wouldn't be adverse to the idea of making it a play area, you know, for, for, for children if, if that's what you're, you're getting at. I, I don't think, and I'm looking at my client, I'm guessing he's gonna throw his shoe at me if I suggest that we would provide kind of a, a, a mirror amenity
Yeah, I'm not expecting
On the south, but we can certainly, you know, remove the landscaping that's shown here and provide for an active play space. I, I think that's something we're more than willing to do. Again, if that's the will of the, the council, we're comfortable in either direction.
Afraid then you'd have the Autumn Glen kids, a whole bunch of kids playing, or Autumn Park and everybody complaining.
Well, they'll be driving, they'll be driving through that subdivision anyway, so.
Hopefully not. Hopefully it's too slow.
The road will be open, right?
Mm-hmm.
There'll be tons that will go through there if they're going from the high school. They'll cut through Autumn Park, so that will increase the traffic on that side.
Yeah, I, it could, it could. So maybe having a playground that close to the road and right where he, where, where you're talking might not be beneficial. It's, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Go over your answer again, please, on, on the park, your idea, that idea about removing. Can you show me on the, on the screen?
Yeah, so, so the, can you see the cursor?
Right.
Great. So, so that is, is a planned bosque and it's, it's essentially a planting that the architects came up with that they liked that was consistent with kind of the natural theme that you have on the, on the southern portion or western portion, whatever you call, wanna call it. Because obviously you have all of this undevelopable area, you've got these natural areas. And so they liked that. It was in keeping kind of with that theme. What, what I'm suggesting is if the, the will of the council is to, to convert that to an amenity area, I mean, not to include buildings, but you know, you know, possible play area, I think that's something that we'd, we would be willing to do. You know, we're not necessarily wedded to the bosque. I didn't know what a bosque was until I was educated during this process and neither did my client for that matter. So he's certainly not wedded to the idea. I think what I'm suggesting, Mr. Mayor, is we're, we're flexible whichever direction the council would want us to go.
Like, is that the only location? What if you did it at the end of the cul-de-sac on the higher up there?
Yeah, are you mentioning the cul-de-sac closest to Ralph Stevens? There's wetlands that come up pretty close to that area and also some existing trees that we're trying to preserve in that area. So I believe we can provide some type of a flat lawn area, but I could not commit to the size of it without getting into the detail and looking at the trees that we're trying to preserve.
Other questions or comments?
I, I mean, on that matter, I'm really indifferent. I think as it is now, it's more what it keeps with the theme, keeps with the wetlands, which is fine. But in the same regard, if we open it up, you have a bench, you have a play area. I think it makes it more accessible. People are gonna use it more than they would if they were just walking through a bosque. I don't know how many people are gonna do that. They're probably more inclined to go play or hang out at a bench, but I, I don't necessarily have a preference, but I just think highest and best use, you'd probably want them to use the area versus not.
Right. And I, you know, I do appreciate that you've all gone above and beyond with a lot of, I know we've had a lot of requests and continue to have a lot of requests, but I just understand this is for me personally, this is, this is very hard because it's, I'm just not ready for this much, this many more residents over in this side of town. So that's, that's, I just want you to understand, that's why we're being a little bit tougher and knowing it's just gonna get busier and busier. We wanna make sure that we're providing the best for our residents.
Completely understand.
Anything else of the applicants? Guess not. Thank you, thank you, both of you. Okay, Matt?
So I did wanna clarify one thing. As presented, the bosque was a portion of the initial submittal. Whether it was intentional or not, that was removed during the development review process. We had issued the comment that it would not be capable of counting towards the developed recreational open space. And as a result of that comment, it was removed from the plans. So if you did want to see anything like that, then I would specifically ask for that because it is not shown on the plans that you're
Okay. Didn't know that.
Reviewing.
Okay. What else for Matt?
So do we have to specifically ask about the lighted crosswalk and the additional play space?
Or is it that later? I mean, how, when do we?
You could probably mention that. I mean, just to have it, I, I can relay the message obviously to our reviewers, but to have it officially on the record.
I think this is important enough to do that. I really do. I think
I think you would include that if it was
In the motion, right?
In the motion, include it as a condition in addition to the outlined agenda packet conditions.
Yep. Matt, can you just go back?
Yes.
One or two slides. Explain to me again on that one, what you were saying, the bosque shows here, but it's not on the plan we reviewed?
Yeah, so the, kind of the tree symbols you see here.
Uh-huh.
What's shown on the plan is just the, the required street trees along that open space lot, but that the site itself did not have any planned plantings on it.
And then on the left is, and like an infill play area on the northern side?
Correct.
Okay.
And that is shown on the development plan.
Yeah, and maybe something if, you know, if we wanted it opened up and something like that over on that side would be what we would wanna ask for.
And that could also be part of the, the motion, correct?
Yeah, that would minimize. I'm seeing little kids on bikes trying to cross to go swinging.
And I guess just to factor in as maybe part of the discussion, whenever we review these types of play areas where there's equipment or places where an able-bodied person would be able to go and use them, we would also need to make them accessible. And we have had issues of sites that simply were not able to be accessed unless they were provided with a parking space, a van-accessible parking space. And I could see this site being difficult to, and I, I'm not, I'm not up to all of the North Carolina building code requirements. Happy to lean on others for that. But in terms of locating an on-street parking space that's van-accessible on the inside of a curb is likely not the safest place.
And across the street there, where the kiosk is gonna be, wouldn't count?
And, and kind of, again, I think that, that is an area where they were looking to preserve more, are you talking about relocating?
No, I mean, I mean, parking, the parking by the
And it, it may be that they can use that space. I think typically they want it on the same side so you're not having to cross the street. But in terms of investigating that as in a potential amenity space, that's, that's absolutely a possibility. We can, we can look at that as part of the construction drawing review process.
Cause I, I think of, it's a Braxton Village there on Texan Way and I forget the road there, that little park.
Playground that right
Yeah, that little playground doesn't have parking or anything like that, but because it's, it's so small, that might be something that.
Yeah, and there are a lot of older subdivisions where either the code had changed or interpretation of the code had changed over the years.
Okay. I mean, yeah, I think if that can definitely be looked into, if that can be done, that's something I think the council would like to see.
Sunset Oaks has a few of these where I live, exactly that, small pocket park, in-between-sized pocket park, by a road. They're busy.
And then also the lighted crosswalk.
Have to do that.
Something to note with that, when you're making your motion, is that it would be also subject to DOT approval during that.
Right, of course. Thank you.
What else?
I think, Mayor, you're bringing up a good point. When I look at this, I just see density and not like features of tranquility, like, you know, like Autumn Park has a fountain or, you know, so, like, there's some other things to, to give some character.
Right, when we have high density, I mean, because it's, it's zoned, it's, and it was zoned higher before, we're trying to make the most of things, right? And a little help with that would be, would be good.
Yes, some, yes, some character would be great.
This is killing me.
What else?
Yeah, this is tough.
Anything else to add, Matt, at this point?
Nope.
Okay. Let's talk about some proposed motions and some additions to those motions.
All right.
Or not.
Where do we, where do we bring up these conditions and which, is this, how many motions do we have?
You do the, I think the first one.
Just one, so.
There's 10 conditions.
Yeah.
Can we just add to it?
Sorry, 11. I mean, the wrong one.
Presumably we would simply add the rapid flashing crosswalk sign per DOT approval and with regards to the bosque or the
The bosque, yeah.
How do we wanna, how do we wanna word that?
Counselor's suggestion?
So I, I do want you to find as a fact that the crosswalk is necessary to provide good pedestrian connectivity in this, in this neighborhood. You know, that, that you vote on that fact finding based on the evidence you were provided tonight and with respect to the bosque, that you find as a fact that is some level of change is necessary in order for the neighborhood to be in keeping with the, to, with the consistency of the, of the UDO to create an open play area, that type of, some, some fact finding. And then once those facts are found by you, if you chose to find them, that you would then add those two conditions to the list of conditions.
So we need a fact, finding a fact before?
The first finding of fact that I'd want you to make is that a lighted signalized or a rapidly, I believe what you're referring to is a rapidly flashing beacon that, that we put in throughout town, that that is necessary to provide adequate pedestrian connectivity in this neighborhood on, on Ralph Stevens Road and that, that, you know, that, that's finding a fact, one, that I'd want you to find and, and vote on.
Should that be incorporated on this particular motion here, counselor?
So you could just, just say somebody that, that, you know, I, I propose that finding a fact and take a vote on that.
I propose a finding a fact that a rapid flashing crosswalk signal be provided at Ralph Stevens Road so as to provide adequate and safe pedestrian connectivity.
Second.
Much to men's second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, thank you.
And then the second finding of fact I want you to find is that a change to the plan would, would be necessary to have it in keeping with the spirit of the UDO with respect to the FISC, the OSK, whatever that group of trees is, to provide an open play or a open
Park?
And I, I don't necessarily wanna call it a park, but an open area for congregation or open, open, open space, a place of open space in that area that, that's shown on the plans.
Want to tackle that one too?
Based on the evidence submitted, I propose we find as a fact that a change to the plan would be necessary to keep in the spirit of the UDO with respect to the bosque and instead to provide an open area for recreation and other activities.
Second.
Much to men's second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously, approval. Now we tackle, motion?
And then this motion that's proposed on the screen would be fine and then just tack on conditions that support your findings of fact that you just made.
On this motion here would be better.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve development plan 18-dp-13 for Stevens Track as submitted by Withers Rabinal Incorporated Project Number 02170951 dated revised 01-07-2019 with the conditions outlined in the agenda packet as well as the condition to provide rapid flashing beacon at the crosswalk of Stevens, Ralph Stevens Road as well as to provide a bosque or open space for congregation in the development plan.
Second.
Much to men's second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. There's one more, as I recall, no?
Nope.
That's it?
That's it.
I had two, but that's fine.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, Matt. Thanks for helping.
Thanks, Matt.
Item 8A consent agenda, Mayor Protem, who would like to crack this? He had to leave. Just approved.
Consent agenda.
Oh. A motion to approve the consent agenda?
That's it.
Except for 9D.
Yeah.
Second.
Much to men's second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Item 10A new business Ting Park Stadium field improvements. And let's go to Adam. Adam Hoffman, of course.
Mayor, Town Council. So we're just gonna recap a little bit tonight and talk about the Town Council workshop we had last week, looking at the mound and some of the stadium improvements and how they would improve our maintenance issues as well as help some of our field flexibility. So requested action for tonight is just for the council to approve the Ting Park Stadium improvements with just an amount of just under $41,000.
I know we talked about this at the workshop.
Yes, sir.
Just let me add one thing. We were talking about, talking to the owner of the Salamanders again today, just to confirm that I felt good about it and they felt good about it. The answer is they both felt good about it.
Well, great. I feel good about it.
Thought I'd mention it.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir. So just to recaps the, what we would do to the stadium or the amenities we would perform is we would take out the clay mound here in the infield as well as the areas out here in the bullpen. We would take out the clay areas or the turf areas here that are inundated with clay here and in the bullpen. We would replace that with synthetic turf that would give us a more continuous playing surface in the infield as well as in the bullpens. And then we would replace that with a And then we would replace that with a, this six-piece portable mound that we can disassemble or assemble in about 30 minutes to an hour. This is a high-end mound that we would use for Salamanders games or any baseball moving forward. In our bullpens, we would use something similar to this, but it would be a one-piece system, so it's not as elaborate as this because we would never have to, to disassemble that. What benefits would that provide? If you were to rent the field right now, you could have about 128 yards going north-south, which gives us plenty of room. Going east to west, you only have about 58 yards wide because of the mound and its proximity to the field. So, for a high school level, college level, pro-level soccer game, you wouldn't be able to accommodate that. They need at least 70 yards in width to host a game like that. So, if we were to go and get rid of the mound, it would provide us that opportunity to give us that 70 yards plus where we could host the Wake Football Collegiate All-Star League, which we'd like to start the summer, men's and women's. It would also allow us to host people or teams like Duke and NC State who've requested to have games in our stadium, as well as Wake Tech, who currently uses our soccer complex. Ultimately, though, it will allow us to provide great soccer in the backyards of all of our constituents, so kids could come to here on, you know, any given day and watch a high-end soccer game. As far as the infield, by removing the mound, you could host a plethora of different softball and baseball games. Right now, we're just, we're just able to host a high-end 12-up, 12-and-over high school level collegiate level baseball. If you got rid of the mound, obviously, we could put a portable mound at any point. We could move the bases at any level, at any length, so that will allow us to, to host softball at all levels, genders, we could have park or league there, league play there, or we could just use it for playoffs, or if we had rain delays that we got into a lot of trouble, we could have games there as well. And then we could host a lot of youth baseball tournaments if we so desired. Now, as far as the viewing angle, if you were to watch a little league football game right now on the third baseline, most of the game plays here in the middle of the field, it's hard to discern whose kid is who. So, by putting it closer to this third baseline here, you would be able to have a better viewing angle if you're a spectator. And we've had a lot of requests for this, not only from football, but lacrosse and in any other event that we could push closer to that third baseline, which is where most of our seating capacity is. As far as creating multiple use opportunities, it would give us a lot more flexibility if you were to get rid of this mound. As I said before, you have a lot of length going this way, but we've been kind of hamstrung, if you will, having more than one field. We've had requests where people want to have a field going east-west on this northern side and then two on the southern side. If we were to get rid of the mound, we could have two lacrosse games going at one time. And of course, there'd be 12 and underfields, it wouldn't be, you know, nearly the length that you would have for a full 11 v 11 or, or high school or college lacrosse game. Now, as far as maintenance issues, as you saw before in the picture, that we have a lot of clay that's built up around the mounds in the bullpen as well as this area, and it's causing some drainage, drainage issues. We also have some turf stainage on the warning tracks and in the bullpen areas where that clay over time has just stained the carpet, if you will. Now, it's going to kind of obviously eliminate those things, but alleviate future staining from occurring. From a clay dugouts and clubhouse, a lot of the guys after, on a rainy day, they'll bring their cleats and they'll slam it against the walls of the clubhouse or the dugout, so that's, becomes a mess to clean up over time. Now, as far as labor concerns or labor cost, we did track this over the course of a year. It would cost us approximately $4,200 in labor costs as we go out and groom the mound on a daily basis for about nine to 10 months out of the year. As far as $10,000 goes for material costs, that's for turfists and clay that we would use to repair the mounds. Now, going forward, if we had this portable mound, we would still need labor costs to assemble and disassemble the mound depending on what type of events we have. But as far as the $10,000 goes, that would be a cost savings that we'd have on a yearly basis that we could count on, so over the course of four years, this project would pay for itself. Now, if we approve this, Wake Football Club has, they've offered to pay half of it, and if, again, if it approved, we would work on a contract with them and bring to council on a future date so that we could work out the details of how they would handle that. So, to recap, if we were to have this project, we would have a lot more flexibility on the field, we could host a lot more events and sports, it would eliminate some of our maintenance concerns, and then we would be reimbursed by Wake Football by half. So, at this time, I'm open for questions or comments.
Let me make a comment first. As it relates to events, I'm glad you mentioned it. We're going to talk to our folks who own the place, the Salamanders, and we're talking about doing some more events. With this mound off, we can have standing people, hundreds, thousands, no, just hundreds, standing out on the field, and I suggested we get share if they'll pay for it, because everybody's calling me and telling me that share was great at DPAC and all this kind of thing. I'm not sure that's going to fly, but anyway, I think that's a big part of it, and then the only other question I have is, is the club going to pay, Wake Football Club going to pay half every year or just the first part?
They would just pay about $20,000. They would pay $10,000 on the first year and then the remainder on the second year.
Okay.
And will, and will, your Parks and Rec staff will be trained in how to take apart the mound, put it all together?
Yes, ma'am.
So that we don't have anybody just coming out there and dragging pieces?
No, I'm sure we're going to get pretty familiar with how to assemble that and disassemble that. We've already talked about how we would do that and try to find the most efficient way possible, especially if you have to do it over the course of a weekend. You know, that's where you could have some overtime, so that's where we looked at some of the labor costs, but we're going to try to do this as efficiently as possible and strategically as possible, planning our events so we wouldn't necessarily have to come in on a Saturday night to reassemble the mound. But I'm sure we're going to get really adept to putting that together, because I got a feeling we're going to have a lot of usage here that we haven't had in the past, and we're going to have a lot of requests coming up. So, we're real excited on the flexibility we're going to have for this.
Well, and I know the Salamanders, you know, how many of us have been to a Salamanders game and all of a sudden it downpours and they're covering the mound and we're sitting there waiting, waiting, waiting. Now, we can just play right through.
And they have to put stuff on it and then we wait and the field is ready to go.
The field is always ready to go, and that's, that's been the weakest link. So, go ahead, sorry.
What is the lifetime of the mound under our current use?
The mound will be for many years. It's that landing area that we're going to have to replace probably on a, every six months to year basis, depending on our usage. With the mounds, we're going to off, buy an extra landing strip for each one. So, we'll have four in the, in the bullpens and we'll have that one here in the infield. So, we're going to actually order that, so we'll have one in stock at all times so that we can make sure if that wears out quicker than what we think it will, we're ready to go to repair it. So, really, you're just repairing that landing strip. The regular mound itself should last for years.
Do you see a change in any of our fee structures to remove or add?
Councilmember Carol LeWitt, it's something we can look at. Right now, we're at the point where we're looking to our fee schedule, so that is something that we could look into.
Other comments or questions? We've talked about this already, of course. We're all good?
Mayor, members of council, maybe just one other thing that I would add, if I could, that there is some time sensitivity on this particular action. If you do decide to move forward tonight, this will enable us to engage with the vendor and to have it replaced in time for the Salamanders at the start of their season.
Good point, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's go to, let's go to a motion. Somebody tackle.
Motion to approve Ting Park Stadium Field Improvements in the amount of $40,865.
Second.
Much to make, second in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Excellent.
All right, moving right along, item 11, other business. We've already talked about crosswalk safety, which I still want to do every time. Those are working well, especially the ones with the lights. I even find those pretty impressive. And then, the 53,000 block that's going up next door, across, brand-new, the groundbreaking was, was transpired two weeks ago, was it, ish? And that's now, it started out as a 13,000 square foot building, then it went to 20-some, and now it's 53,000. So, our, don't tell our friends in Apex, I told you this, our town downtown will be, I think it was recollection, 306 feet longer than theirs.
Yay.
But don't tell them I said that. Next.
Thank you for our wonderful retreat, your staff, and this wonderful interaction, and I look forward to next steps with what we've talked about.
Thank you, you feel better. Who else?
Just congratulations to the Holly Springs Police Department and all those involved in this weekend's Duncan Dip at Harris Lake. Councilwoman Kelly and I participated.
It was awesome. It was really fun.
I don't know if that's a side effect or not.
No, it is not.
Good, good.
I'm really sorry I couldn't make that.
It was really fun.
Yeah, where were the rest of you guys? It was, it was enjoyable, it was cold, but...
It was warm.
Raised $12,000 for the Special Olympics of North Carolina, so it was a really good event.
I actually thought the water was warm. I expected it to be colder.
It probably wasn't that bad. I wouldn't know. Who else? Good? Managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have three items for you tonight. The first one is just a reminder that tomorrow evening, you have your town and state dinner. That starts at 5:00 with a reception and then 6:00 for dinner. They are, however, providing some optional educational programming beforehand, it starts at 2:30, and there are three different topic sessions that if you are able to attend, that you might be interested in sitting in on. One is affordable housing, there's another one on broadband, and then a third on a legislative update. So, look forward to seeing a number of you tomorrow at that, at that dinner and opportunity to network with others around the state and with our legislators. The second item, I know all of you have had a chance to meet LeAnn Plummer, our new Parks and Recreation Director. I do also want to make a public announcement, though, with that, for those who are in the audience and those who may be watching this on YouTube or Vimeo. So, the, let me introduce LeAnn Plummer, who's sitting over here on my left, and the, LeAnn is our new Parks and Recreation Director, and she's been a resident of Holly Springs since 2012, so somebody who knows Holly Springs and very familiar with our Parks and Rec programming. LeAnn was served as the Director of the Recreation and Parks Department for 12 years in Annapolis, Maryland, before moving to North Carolina, and there she had a number of notable capital projects, including the construction of an 80,000 square foot recreation center and numerous other parks redevelopment projects. One of the other things I think that's important to note is from a reputational standpoint, LeAnn was very instrumental in bringing creative solutions, innovative programs, and enriching the services of the community, so a lot of great qualities. Many of you know that LeAnn recently was the Division Manager in the Parks and Recreation Department at the Town of Cary, so we were happy to steal her from a neighbor. And where there, she led the department's effort for national re-accreditation and achievement of the National Gold Medal for Excellence in Park and Recreation Management. LeAnn was also responsible for technology initiatives, marketing, budget administration, special services, and the oversight of parks and greenways in Cary. The other thing, many of you may remember LeAnn, is she was also the Chamber CEO here several years ago, so again, a familiar person to our community. And then just finally, LeAnn received her undergraduate degree in Recreation Administration from Bowling Green State University in Ohio, and she holds a Master's in Business Administration from the University of Maryland University College. She's also a Certified Parks and Recreation Professional from the National Recreation and Park Association, so I'm really grateful and proud to introduce LeAnn Plummer to the community. I know that she'll do a great job leading our community forward. I also want to recognize Adam Huffman, I don't know if he's in the...
He's still here.
Yeah, Adam did a great job leading our Parks and Recreation Department for almost a year prior to LeAnn's appointment, and I want to recognize him and his great and outstanding efforts and leadership through that period and grateful for that, so welcome. And lastly, Mayor and Council, was just a thank you to you for the work that you did at the, at the annual retreat. I want to congratulate you on how hard you worked, and I know staff pushed, particularly on that Friday afternoon when we did a lot of strategic planning work, but it was really exciting and you really took the town really far in your conversation and your leadership, and we, from the staff side, are working on pulling all those pieces together and working on those next steps, and so I just want to congratulate all of you and say thank you for a successful retreat, you did a great job. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. As most people know, I have a love for nicknames, and I didn't tell LeAnn I was going to say this, so I'm going to tell you it anyway. The codename that I've got for her, a nickname, is General Lee. I think that's wonderful. So, welcome, LeAnn, glad to see you back. Counselor?
Counselor.
Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.